Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all the marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we do ask that you please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Mrs. Beeger is our second. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Marslov, any recognition this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. We are pleased to recognize the 10th grader from Williamsville East who recently achieved a perfect score on the ACT exam, a standardized test used for college admissions. According to the ACT organization, less than 1% of all students who take the ACT each year earn the top composite score of 36. Here to tell us more and introduce this exceptional student is East High School Principal Brian Swatlin.
Thank you, Board, for acknowledging Aditya's tremendous accomplishment. As Dr. Marslov said, less than 1% of all test takers achieve this score. So I would like to congratulate Aditya on his perfect achievement of a 36 SAT score. His achievement on the, or I'm sorry, ACT, his achievement on the ACT is significant and it is rare. Only around 2/10 of 1% of all test takers earn this top score. Among U.S. high school graduates in the class of 2018, just 3,741 out of more than 1.9 million students who took the ACT earned the composite score of 36. And that was based on the class of 2018, and we all know Aditya's the class of 2021.
Yes.
2021. So it's an amazing accomplishment for him. He's an exceptionally young man at our school, and he's a role model for our students at our school. And I'm so proud of him, and I offer him my full congratulations. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the teachers in the school district, like Transit Middle School and East High School. They, I moved here like four years ago, and it really helped. My teachers helped me get adjusted, and it helped me do better in school. Thank you.
Are there any other board acknowledgements this evening? Nope. Okay, moving on. Mrs. Beeger, would you please read the Board's public expression statement?
Sure. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. For Policy 1510, the Board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and their concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the Board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at 2 and 1/2 minutes so that you can conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we're listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attacks. Thank you for your consideration. And we do not have anyone signed up for public expression. We do have a public expression later in the meeting if anyone is interested. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 7 personnel, 8 business, and 9 special needs and student activities as presented? Mr. Mecca, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, is there any discussion? I would like to make amendment, a motion to break consent item 8J. Bid awards ground supplies out for a separate vote. Is there anybody that will second that, please? Mr. Mecca, thank you. Any discussion? I will give my reason. I have a client that's on this, so conflict of interest. All in favor on this motion? Motion carries unanimously. Back to the original motion, minus item 8J. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Would someone, I guess technically, we make a motion to approve the consent agenda 8J. Bid awards ground supplies due to the personnel conflict interest that I mentioned before? Mr. Bornstein, is there a second? Sorry. Going off script. Mr. Mecca, thank you. Any discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion carries 801. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on December the 11th, 2018, please? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? All in favor?
Wait.
Nope, sorry. Was there a discussion?
No, just, uh, did we attend, or did we, did we report her?
Excuse me? Yep. Yeah, where are you at?
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yep. We're good. Sorry. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, all in favor? It's okay.
That'll be my own script.
All in favor again. I'm sorry, show hands. Mr. Meyer, I don't believe you were at that meeting. Would you please? Thank you. All opposed. Abstentions. Thank you. Motion carries 801. Moving right along. The Buffalo Philharmonic Orchestra Western New York's Music Education Advocacy Night will be Monday, February the 4th, 2009, at the Clement House, 786 Delaware Avenue, Buffalo, New York, 14209, from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. I currently show attending this event Mr. Mecca and Mr. Bornstein. Any other board members like to attend? Nope, okay. The budget finance and program team for the Erie County Association of School Boards met on Thursday, January the 3rd, 2019, from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. in room B2B at Erie One Bowses. Mr. Mecca attended this. Would you give us a brief synopsis of the evening's events? Mr. Mecca, please.
Sure. There has been a recent leadership change within the Erie County Association of School Boards. Excuse me. There was previously one executive director, and now the role is split between two individuals. There are some issues, there were some issues with the recent financial reports not having consistency across categories, which concerned members of the component school districts that were at the meeting. It seemed that the differences were due to the fact that certain amounts were posted at different times throughout the month without specifying the date that the report was made, which explains the slight discrepancies between certain amounts. So we spent a lot of time debating whether or not we could correctly formulate a budget for the 2019-2020 school year. Or fiscal year, their fiscal year is different. I think it starts in July. In the end, we ended up being able to decide that it was a responsible budget that we could start to move forward. It actually is, has fewer expenses in it than the current budget, so it's a decrease in the amount of money that's being spent in the budget. And the group decided that that the inaccuracies should be addressed by the new leadership of ECASB, and that may require the help of an accountant, it sounded like. The leadership also proposed a special committee to look at the accounting standards and controls that could be implemented for ECASB. ECASB also has not had an audit in many years. We've had an accountant review the financials on a yearly basis, and that review is reviewed by another team, of which I happen to be a part of, and you guys probably don't know that, which is a, like a fiscal responsibility team of the ECASB. So I've been reviewing those for the past couple of years that I've been on there, and, but it's not as robust as an audit, so we will be considering an audit as well. So there were some concerns. It was kind of an interesting meeting compared to most. Most, it's just kind of, yeah, everything looks good, you know, but we caught some inaccuracies and some things that concerned us, and, but I don't think, you know, I don't think it's anything of significance other than errors.
Thank you. The legislative team is set to meet Thursday, January the 17th, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Erie One Bowses offices in West Seneca. I have down attending, Dr. McClary is going to be filling in that meeting for Mr. Mecca. The delegate assembly meeting is also that evening, from 7:15 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. Same location. Dr. McClary will be there, and I will also be attending. The dessert forum is Thursday, February 7th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. Dr. Rick Timms, the analysis of early budget development, will be there. Again, the location is Erie One Bowses in West Seneca. Right now, I don't have anybody attending this. Is anybody here, would they like to attend? We got RSVP? Nope. Okay. Any other business to report under the Erie County Association of School Boards? Nope. Moving on. The legislative event that's coming up, February the 9th, 2019, at East High School is the Legislative Breakfast. It's at East High School. In your packet you received, looks like Legislative Breakfast menu options and quotes. I want to open it up to discussion here to everybody here at the Board to decide, do we want to purchase it? Do we want to, if we do, do we want, which option do we want to proceed with? You saw that the grapevine, I believe, was the, came in at a total of 3213. Johnny C's had a, and adding this up, if you look at food with rentals, they came in at 2418. And Zo Foods with rentals came in at 272550. Mr. Mecca?
I'm glad you broke it down that way, because that's the way I saw it as well. The grapevine was including plates and tablecloths and all that kind of stuff, whereas the other two bids were not, so Lynn must have gone out and gotten a bid for the rental of China and all that. So I kind of saw that as needing to be added to the other bills to bring them even. I kind of liked the idea personally of going with Johnny C's with the rental of the China and such. I like the fact that they're a business that's located within the boundaries of our district, for one thing, but also their food is good, and it was a reasonable quote. But, and I like the idea of us paying for the breakfast as well.
Mrs. Carey, if I can just quickly add or ask a question on that. Are there any hidden fees or anything like that that we should be aware of if we go to All Seasons directly? Now, when I had weddings that I've had to plan and stuff like that, that they sometimes have some fees that aren't necessarily upfront, cleaning, that sort of stuff, or?
I know that Kathy Christopher, child nutrition, who was head of child nutrition, offered assistance in the cleaning of the plates, so she would have staff there to help a few people that day, but I can also go back to them. If you want to give me an idea of if we have a cap, you know, as far as how much you want to spend. But I don't believe there's any hidden fees. That is what they quoted.
Okay, thank you.
And that was also on 100, so if there's 150 people coming, it's going to be fair, but.
Mrs. Beeger?
I know this is a discussion item and not an action item, so I know we're not voting on this. I just think before we make this decision that we should go back and ask. I'm not certain that the request for us was to pay for the breakfast as much as just to host the breakfast. I'm not trying to be impolite. I just don't know if that was part of the discussion, the planning discussion when we were there. We talked about the arrangements and setup and things like that, but before, you know, we talk about spending this kind of money, let's just make sure that it's necessary to do so, because I don't know if that was asked of us, if that makes sense.
Who was present at this meeting? You, Dr. McClary, Dr. Marslov? Do any of the two others of you that were present, do you recollect?
I agree with Mrs. Beeger in that it was not asked. I think it's for consideration that we, as a district, may be interested in providing that to the Erie County Association, but no, they did not ask us to pay for it. And I'm going to add also, as we talk about this, we were talking about the two meetings that are coming up on the 17th. There's also a meeting that same night, like a small meeting of the committee that's looking at this legislative event. So I was going to go to that also, so I can answer questions or take back questions or let them know the things that we maybe have agreed upon or talked about.
Just a suggestion. I know that we discussed this, whether, I think Erie County School Boards said that they would be willing to pay for it, but if we so wanted to. So to hear that their budget is actually down is wonderful. Perhaps even splitting the cost and then being able to say that it's sponsored by both Erie County School Board and the Williamsville City School, or Central School District, might be a viable option.
Dilemma is this. We're probably going to have to turn this into a motion and make some sort of decision tonight, because looking at the calendar, this is February the 9th, Saturday. Our next board meeting after tonight is February the 12th.
Right.
So we will have to probably make some sort of a motion here in a moment to decide what we want to do, even if it's kind of a caveat with strings attached. Other discussion on this?
Just a quick point that I'll vote for it, because the idea is very good, but absent an understanding of exactly what our budget line item looks like right now, makes, gives me a little bit of an uncomfortable feeling, but I think it's a good initiative.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
I was just going to say that I like the idea of splitting the budget. So that way, we are listed as a sponsor, but splitting the cost of the event, I feel like, is an appropriate gesture.
Any other discussion?
I don't know that we can do it, but assuming that the votes are here to approve it, we could also, subsequent to this, ask the other parties to pitch in and give it to us in the form of reimbursement for part of the expense. I don't know if that's possible from the accounting side. I don't know if we're allowed to do that, but.
You mean like a credit towards next year's renewals with the?
No, I mean that they would just reimburse us for part of the expense directly.
Yep. Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. I think, Mr. Mecca?
Part of the issue with that is, I was thinking of it, and I don't know if it is or isn't an issue either. If we purchase it, we are a tax-exempt organization, and we would be purchasing it tax-exempt. I'm not sure that they have the same status that we do. But we could, provided that it's okay, they could reimburse us some amount of money for the breakfast.
Can I ask how that's different from splitting the cost?
I'm not sure either. I believe that would still be a 50-50 split.
I was only speculating on ways in which you might be able to recoup. I'm not saying that you can recoup. I'm okay with approving it as is, but if you'd like to try to, because we have to take a vote tonight. So it's either, do we do it, or do we skip it? I think we should do it. I think it's a really good event. I think there's a lot of value to hosting it, and it doesn't put us out of budget or anything. I mean, we can afford to cover it, so I'm in favor of voting yes. And I think we should call it, just have a vote unless there's others who want to pitch in.
Mr. Mecca, your original meeting on this, they did suggest they were willing to expense this or put money towards this, correct?
I think if we don't purchase the breakfast, that they will.
That's pretty.
If that answers your question.
I believe I'll just, we'll leave it to Mr. Maturzky. If we do decide to vote on a 50-50 split, he can probably figure out how best to arrange the reimbursement on that. So does somebody want to make a motion on this, so that we can actually put this up for an actual vote? And then make sure you word how, yeah.
Does a motion have to decide which?
It would. We're going to have to decide or put it in the motion.
So if anyone feels heavy about a certain food venue, that's fine.
Mr. Meyer, you were going to comment?
I just will say on this particular point that I like Mr. Mecca's thoughts about going with Johnny C's, their local business, they're in our district, and I agree they make good food, so.
Dr. McClary?
Maybe, I don't know if Mrs. Beeger or Dr. Marslov remembers, if there was any discussion in terms of when they were going to pay for the breakfast. Were we still going to find it, supply it, and they paid for it? Or was it, they were going to do everything, where they were going to find the food and bring the food in? Do you remember that?
I remember that Dr. O'Malley was saying that she was going to look into it after the holidays. She had planned on doing some of that work, and we just haven't heard back yet, so that's why I'm a little hesitant to vote for paying for this if they may be doing the same work on their end to fund this. I just don't know. I think, I'm concerned about voting for it without knowing that information. And I remember her saying she was going to look into those details after the holidays.
Has she contacted you, Dr. Mars?
Yes, I've been in touch with Dr. O'Malley, and they have not tried to procure anyone to provide the breakfast at East High School on February 9th. They're waiting for our response. I told her we were having this meeting this evening, and it would be a point of discussion. I would get back to her most likely tomorrow.
All right, perfect then. Thank you.
Mr. Mecca?
I'd like to put a motion forward that we pay for the breakfast at using Johnny C's and the company provided for the China, I forgot the name of it already.
All Seasons.
Seasons.
Season, thank you. And that we later seek a contribution from Erie County Association of School Boards to help offset the cost.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Meyer seconds. Any discussion?
I have a question. What does seek a contribution from Erie County Association of School Boards mean? Is it a dollar? Is it $10? Is it half? Is it 80%? I just want some clarity going forward.
I put it vaguely on purpose, I think, because we would then ask them to contribute. I would expect, I guess, that that would be close to 50%. But I left it vague in case it wasn't exactly 50%, or if we got 0%.
So by motion, the Board may be paying 100% of this bill, correct?
Correct. That's our.
We will attempt to recoup some costs, preferably up to 50%, but that won't be in the motion.
So in that regard, I'm just going to speak on behalf. I would like to either fund the entire thing, or I would like to go in with a split offer. I think that we either decide to host it and leave it at that and not seek contribution and leave it vague like that. I just think it needs to be an all, or we go in with, we would like to split the cost, one or the other, is just my feeling.
Would you like to amend the motion?
I sure would.
Can you tell me how you would like to amend it, then?
So at this point, I think I would like to make a motion that Williamsville Central School District goes ahead and funds the breakfast, the legislative breakfast, on February 9th.
Is there a second?
Well, there is a motion already on the table, so this is.
We're amending the motion.
Amendment to the motion, thank you.
Is there a second?
I don't know if I can second, since it was my motion originally, right?
You can second?
Oh, there you go.
Okay, with that, is there any discussion to the amended motion that we will now fund the entire thing? Without any discussion, I will put the amended motion up for a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The district will fund the entire thing. Thank you. The New York State School Board Association, the 2019 Capitol Conference is going to be held on Sunday and Monday, February 10th and the 11th of 2019. The location will be the Renaissance Hotel at 144 State Street in Albany, New York. Registration deadline is February the 2nd. At this point, I do not have anybody down for attending this conference. Is there anybody that would like to go on behalf of the school board? Nope, okay. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the results of the special district vote held at North High School, 1595 Hopkins Road, Williamsville, New York, 14221, on December the 13th, 2018, as presented? Mr. Bornstein, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously, and let me be the first to congratulate the district and everybody on that. Great job, thank you. The, moving right along. Policy migration to Board Docs. Communication Website Management Team needs to know if they may proceed with a migration to Board Docs at no cost drawback is a timeline of up to several months, or should the Board Docs Policy Management Team proceed at a cost of $6,000. In other words, what's being asked here? Do we want to, we're in agreement that we want to move the policies that are currently online over to Board Docs to make it more searchable. The question is, is do we want to do it at no cost to the district, other than time? And it will take approximately six months. I do point out the positive here is during that six-month window, the policies will still be online, they just will not be in the Board Docs subsystem. So they'll still be accessible to the public, as well as board members. And as they move over to the Board Doc system, after they've been successfully migrated over, at that point, I believe the main policy subsystem would be taken down, and we would just revert over to the main Board Docs. Or we can, I believe, pay Board Docs, their management team, a cost of $6,000 and have it done within the next six weeks. Open that up for discussion? Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
I don't see the need to pay the $6,000. I think just having our district staff do it is fine, and it's all available on the Williamsville site, so I should, I just think leave it alone.
Other discussion? Mrs. Beeger?
I agree wholeheartedly. I think spending that money is silly when it's already accessible to people. It will be great when it's more easily searchable and more accessible, but to spend the money to do that sooner doesn't make sense to me.
I saw a few other hands. Is pretty much everybody, I see basically everybody's nodding in agreement on that, so we're fine with just waiting six months or so approximately and just have them migrate it over as time allows. Okay. We have upcoming, let's see here, not this week, next week. Friday, January the 18th, at 7:30 a.m., we have a board visit to Forest Elementary. I show Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Mrs. Beeger, and myself down for this. Anyone else available? Nope, okay. Friday, February 1st, 2019, at 8 a.m., High Middle School. We are running low here. I need to get another volunteer for this right now. I only have Mrs. Leatherbarrow and myself attending this one. I need at least one more board member, please. Mr. Bornstein, thank you. Anybody else able to attend? Okay. Friday, February the 8th, at 8 a.m. is Mill Middle School. I show on this one, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, myself, and Mrs. Van Seis. I have you down as a maybe.
What time is that at?
That is at 8 a.m.
Yes, I will be there.
That's the yes you can attend? Okay. Anybody else able to attend? Nope, okay. That does give us our minimum though of three, so thank you.
Sean, if you could, put me down as a yes for Forest Elementary.
Forest Elementary. So that'll be Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Mrs. Beeger, myself, and you, and Mr. Meyer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we are to confirm the board retreat date, which we agreed upon in the fall, or summer, actually, I believe, maybe fall. It is March the 30th, 2019. The location, facilitator, and attendees, well, the attendees are, actually, we're looking to expand the attendees list. The location, facilitator, and attendees, well, the attendees are, actually, we're looking to expand the attendees list here. So my thought for this retreat, first of all, I want to make sure that everybody is still available to attend this date. This works for everybody still? Great, because we're looking, we're definitely shooting for a hundred percent attendance. I know I've mentioned this numerous times here, so it's not gonna be a shock to anybody. My goal for this retreat this year, if everybody here is in agreement with it, is I want to spend this retreat working on goals, and I would like to invite the executive team of the district, so the assistant superintendents, to come to this retreat as well, to work with us and learn how to set goals. Not that we don't know how to set goals, but look at longer projections, your long projections. Look at how the district and the board can work together on setting goals, how to set effective goals that are actually goals, not things that we're already going to try and accomplish. I would probably be looking to get the same facilitator we had at our last retreat. We have, I don't believe, reached out to her yet, but if she's available, I'd like to bring her back in. Again, hypothetical on a lot of this stuff right now. It's the idea that I wanted to discuss here on the table with you all to make sure that it was all, you know, something that we could all agree with. At this point, I kind of envisioned that we would spend, you know, the first half of the retreat working on, you know, what is a goal, what's a good goal, how do we, you know, form and formulate that good goal. The second half, we'd probably break out into many groups and actually start working on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty goals for the board and the district. Now, I envision this as a year-long process, starting this year with us, but I would like to envision this as eventually by maybe next year, being able to encompass and grow this into where we're getting feedback from everybody in the district. So we'd be getting feedback from staff and teachers and administrators, and all of that would channel up in through the principals, which would then come up to the executive team, which would then come back to the rest of us so that we can kind of get that kind of three sixty feedback and kind of set our goals based on what everybody envisions. And I kind of see this being a year-long project. I think I've kind of hit all my points on the head here. Dr. Marsloff, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would say it'd be important if we're gonna seriously consider a long-term planning process to sort of decipher and decide what that process is going to look like, who's going to be involved, who might lead the process, what types of commitments would be expected from different stakeholder groups around the district. So it's truly building a long-term plan of success for the Williamsville Central School District, and it's not a district leadership team plan, it's not a board plan, it really is a Williamsville plan. I think that's a critical conversation that can take place, at least for part of the agenda at the board retreat. And I've already spoken with the leadership team. They're willing to come and take part and are excited to take part in the discussion and planning for the future. And this discussion might go on for even more than the next year in terms of getting the work done that needs to be done as it relates to this. But I think it's a great idea, a great opportunity for partnership, and I think it could really work well.
Thank you. With that said, is there any comments, questions, suggestions from the table? Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
My suggestion would be, you know, hearing Dr. Marsloff talk about how this is sort of like the beginning, setting the stage for this goal-setting process, is that our initial meeting with the facilitator maybe be about a four-hour retreat. I think anything beyond that starts to sound like mush in our heads. And, you know, we want to be respectful of our role as board members, not overstepping the superintendent and the leadership team as well. I think within four hours, I would say four hour maximum, perhaps shorter, we could get some good professional development for our own goal-setting process for next year as for board goals. And that would also, with having the leadership team there, would provide an opportunity for us to all work together so that when district goals are presented next year, there's a little bit more uniformity with their goals aligning with our goals.
I don't want to put a timeline on it at this point until we talk to a facilitator to better gauge as to really how long it's gonna take.
We should set some logistics though tonight so that we can begin planning and locking down a facilitator. And I guess one question might be, was everyone that attended the last retreat satisfied with that presenter? And would you like us to try to book that same presenter for the future?
Mrs. Beager?
I was incredibly satisfied with her. I thought she was wonderful. I thought she did a great job with some team building and helping us just with our own professional development as board members. I thought she was fantastic. I would personally welcome her back for sure.
Dr. McCleary?
I would echo what Mrs. Beager said, but I think we need to add that perhaps, and I don't know for sure, that perhaps facilitators have specific areas of expertise, pieces. So the woman who was there may not be a goal-setting person. I mean, again, I agree, she did an excellent job, and it would be terrific to have her back, but if it turns out that's not, like, I'm not sure we should say, please make sure you come back if we then turn around and say we'd like to talk about goals, although she's probably professional enough to say, oh, my colleague so-and-so does that category. Or maybe she does. That just might be something to think about.
Okay.
My understanding to help answer that is that NISBA already has sort of prepackaged retreats that basically have already been created, and that different facilitators are able to pick up that same package and come and present it, and they've been trained to do so, sort of like a train-the-trainers type of thing.
So there isn't.
I believe that that already, that a goal-setting topic already exists.
Any comments?
Are there any more feedback regarding time? How long do we want to be available that day on March thirtieth?
I would like to say I did like the NISBA facilitator. I thought it was very beneficial, and I liked the idea about the goal-setting, especially involving leadership team. And I really like the idea of nine to one. I think four hours is very doable. It's a Saturday. Some people are busy, but I think we can get our business done in that timeframe. And it becomes more productive when we have a limit and we're not together until five o'clock.
I agree with that, Mrs. Van Seis.
Do we have an option for where we would like this?
Right here.
Is here at our facility is okay?
I think so. I think we should keep the cost down and have it here.
Fair enough. Anybody else want to comment or question, or if not, we'll move on. Thank you. Our next community forum will be at North High School, Saturday, April sixth, at nine a.m. I don't believe I have anything else under President's Report, so I will kick it over to you, Dr. Marsloff, for the community update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. I only have one item I'd like to share this evening. As the board knows, we allocated certain funds in last year's budget process to enhance school safety and security of our students and staff. And I'm pleased to share with the board, and I thank the board for your support of a memorandum of agreement with Amherst Police Department and the town of Amherst for a district-wide school resource officer to begin work either later this month or early next month. And they would get started and be based here, but really provide services and coverage to all thirteen schools in our district as a starting point to enhance safety and also to enhance the education of our students when it comes to questions about law, about being involved in law enforcement, different career opportunities, things of that nature. So we have an agreed-upon MOA. I'm very thankful to the Amherst Town Supervisor, Brian Copla, and the entire town board for including this in their school budget, because it is at a significantly reduced cost for the school district. That makes it very palatable for us to be able to provide this type of service for our ten thousand students. So all in all, it's good news to report, and I'll update everyone further once the person is selected and able to get started in his or her duties. So, thank you.
That leads us to the Challenge to Change Summit presentation. Dr. Marsloff?
Yes, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Scanzuzzo, who has some guests with him this evening. We're gonna talk about the Challenge to Change initiative and work that's being done, and Mr. Scanzuzzo.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Kristy Carroll and student representatives from all three high schools. Also, Mr. Andre Thomas, principal at North High School. The Challenge to Change Summit was something that the Williamsville Central School District sponsored this year at Damon College. And a lot of work went in behind the scenes to get this entire summit up and running. I want to thank everybody who took part in it. We had about twenty representatives from each of the student representatives from each of the schools there, in addition to membership from Amherst High School, Kenmore East, Kenmore West, Sweet Home High Schools in attendance. And I will turn it over to Mr. Thomas to just kind of give us a brief overview on the Challenge to Change initiative, how it began, and where it is today.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Scanzuzzo. Thank you for having me here tonight, Board of Education, and Dr. Marsloff. Just really quick, I want to give the floor to our representatives here, but just to give you a quick overview of why we're here is in the spring of two thousand seventeen, Williamsville Schools had the great opportunity to partner with Sweet Home, Sweet Home Schools, as you mentioned, but most importantly, Amherst High School, the Amherst Youth Board, U.B. School of Social Work, and Damon College to bring forth a wonderful experience and opportunity for our children to come together and talk about issues relating to racism, you know, discuss unity and racial understanding. And they came together in a forum at Damon College last, last year, and then again this year to discuss those issues, and to, and they were all equipped with the tools to go back to their home schools and try to bring forth change in their buildings and in their surrounding communities. So I have with me Ms. Kristy Carroll, who was a teacher at North High School, and several students from Williamsville Schools who were part of that change movement called Challenge to Change. So I'll have them come forward and explain to you exactly how this change took place.
I don't think I can see my slides, but I'll try. Good evening. I'm Kristy Carroll. I'm an English teacher at Williamsville North High School. I'd like the students who are with me to introduce themselves as well.
Hi, I'm Cyentica Roy. I'm a junior at Williamsville North.
Good evening. My name is Josh DeLaBert, and I'm a junior at Williamsville South.
Good evening. I'm Annabella D'Amico. I'm a senior at Williamsville East.
All right, so thank you so much for having us this evening and making it available for us to share the information and share our experience with Challenge to Change. The event was, as Mr. Thomas had just mentioned, held at Damon College on November fifteenth. And the beginning of this was basically started with civil unrest that occurred in Ferguson, Missouri. And as a result, something called Gateway to Change was started to provide a forum for high school students to come together and to talk openly and in a forum that was safe and comfortable. And Rochester modeled something just like that and started Rock to Change. And from there, Amherst High School then hosted something called Challenge to Change. And the idea behind Challenge to Change was to then reach out to other local districts and local students and come together as one and allow this forum for students to talk about racial differences and about diversity, but in a positive way and in open, meaningful discussions. So in doing so, Williamsville hosted the event this year, and there was a nice group of, that worked on this. So I want to just mention them briefly. I didn't want to forget anyone. But Dr. Anna Seary, Mr. Tony Scanzuzzo, Mr. Andre Thomas, Mr. Corey Gray, Mr. Jason Swenson, Mr. Kevin Lasky, and Ms. Alexis Langire all kind of worked together to get this going at Damon College this year. And in addition, we partnered and collaborated with the U.B. School of Social Work, specifically Dr. Anna Ball and Kathy Mubarak Miller at the Amherst Youth Consortium. And we all worked collaboratively to make this event happen that day. So I'm gonna let the students talk about their experience because it was extremely positive. Anytime you can bring students together to discuss and talk and bring all different kinds of kids together, I think it's a wonderful experience just in general. The last thing that I really wanted to mention to you was, not only that Williamsville was so proud to be able to sponsor it, but that Dr. Seary and I worked together to secure a grant through teaching tolerance. And it was a grant for five thousand dollars, which funded the majority of what we did that day and allowed that event to happen. So we're very proud of that. And we're hoping that moving forward, other local districts will take this on and will continue this tradition and allow it to reach out into the community. So I'm gonna turn it over to Cyentica, who just wants to share the schools that were participating.
Hi again. So along with these participating schools, Sweet Home High also participated. So the good thing about this summit is that every school has a distinct culture, and events like these bring those cultures together, so we expose ourselves to new ideas and new perspectives on discussing and solving problems and issues.
So Mr. Thomas, the principal of North, so graciously emceed our event, and Kara Oliver, who was depicted with the podium says Damon in front of her, she was the keynote speaker. And in the other pictures, you can see, I mean, Delaney, she's a student from South, she has the red hair. And like Cyentica said, it really was just a collection of students coming together and spreading their individual cultures and individual backgrounds and perspectives to broaden the others. So I just want to personally acknowledge Kara Oliver, who was the speaker. She did a fantastic job. She was approachable, and she was funny, and she, her message was reaching and current, but she treated us like adults. And one of the things that I really appreciated was that she acknowledged the adults in the room because as much as we are the generation of change, they're responsible for coaching and for leading and for guiding our generation of change. So as much responsibility as we have, an equal and maybe even greater responsibility is placed on them, and I think that's really important, and she did an excellent job of acknowledging that.
I just want to step in and clarify for one second that Delaney Govanadio, who has worked with us through this process and planned it, was unable to come this evening. But we do have another student from South, Josh DeLaBerta, with us. He's also a member of the Amherst Youth Consortium, so he's representing them as well, so I just wanted to share that.
So during the summit, we had two breakout sessions, and I'm gonna talk briefly about the first breakout session. So we arranged ourselves in small groups, and we talked about the differences between dialogue, discussion, and debate. And it was really important because it helped set some guidelines for respectful and safe discussion about serious issues like racism and other discrimination. We started off with debating frozen yogurt versus ice cream, and the general consensus was that ice cream is far superior. So that's good. I was in a group with a lot of people who were, had really bold and confident and outgoing personalities. And I was initially wary at first, worrying that these personalities would clash and we'd have problems and conflicts. But these people worked really well together, and they always contributed to discussion, and we always had something to talk about. And as a change agent for the first time this year, I was a little scared to lead a discussion, but being with these, being with a group of such confident people, I felt better about, you know, leading the discussion and coming up with questions to move the discussion forward. Thank you.
So during the second breakout, my group, we talked about what current events are going on in the world and how can we improve these situations. You take a look, within the last twenty years or so, we've made very fine progress around the world in diversity, you know, equality for everybody. And, you know, we talked as a group, my group was a little bit more quiet, but we talked about ways how, you know, including people at school and different events, you know, it doesn't matter what their race is, you know, just trying to include everybody in everything and making sure that nobody's left out, because, you know, learning about different people's culture, it's really important to understand. You know, I really like learning about different people's culture because to me it's very important because different people around the world, they have a different perspective about things. So like my group talked about, just looking around the world and seeing what's going on and achievements. in achievements in different parts of the world, um, as we make advancements. Um, you see, we had the first African-American president, Barack Obama, who did a very phenom- phenomenal job. Um, Hillary Clinton made history. She was the first finalist to be president, woman president. Um, uh, Elizabeth Warren was a finalist, um, or is running, it was announced a couple of weeks ago. So, we're making very significant changes to our society and, you know, um, it's a good thing. I really like the change and we're bringing it. And I felt like Challenge to Change, talking in a group of people, definitely brought that change.
So, in conclusion, I am a senior in high school. So, this was my second and final year, unfortunately, attending this event. But, but even in my second year, I continued to learn and to build off of what I had gained in the first year attending. And then this year, as a change agent, I was able to facilitate the conversations themselves and to really grasp a deeper understanding of what, uh, different students are, are facing. Because the problems that I have in Williamsville are very different than the problems we're facing in Amherst and in Sweet Home and in Kenmore. And it, and it really was enlightening. And, and it was empowering to see so many students committed to affecting change in, in, in our schools and our communities. And, and, and I love that Challenge to Change has the, the power to reach these communities and, and to broaden our horizons, because essentially, like I said earlier, we are the generation of change. And we're gonna go off to college and we are going to be the ones who start to right some of the wrongs and started to, to bring back this, uh, the, this nation that we so hold deeply. And, 'cause we are truly in a polarized state right now. And I think that that starts with building a community of microaffirmations as opposed to microaggressions. We're, we're so quick to drop a subtle comment, a subtle gesture, that, that's, i- i- it's not noticeable. It, it, it really is subconscious, but it has such a profound impact on people. And if we can change those subtle gestures and comments to be those of, of positive and reaffirming and, 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 and inclusive, it'll, it'll do wonders for us. And so, that's why I think, starting here in Williamsville, we need to go forward and be more positive, more affirming. And I know that we already are, and we need to continue those efforts, because if we do, i- it'll only bring us that much closer to the eventual goal of, of not needing summits like this anymore. Because a- as much as it pains to say, you don't want to have to do summits like this, but in a, in a culture like we live in today, they're necessary to bridge some of those divides and some of those gaps. And if we can start to build that culture of microaffirmations as opposed to microaggressions, it'll only bring us closer to our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Do you have a few moments for questions?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Dr. McLaren?
I was just going to begin with a comment. Um, I happen to be, uh, familiar with this, um, event from another organization that I belong to. But I was very pleased that Williamsville, um, was willing to, um, take the lead this year. And I certainly hope that we continue to stay involved, um, in upcoming years. And I want to thank all of the people who participated, both the adults and the students, because hearing presentations like this always, um, helps us realize why we're willing to, um, be members of a Board of Education for a district like Williamsville.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Van Sis.
First, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you, Kristi, and to the students. Um, the way you get up and how comfortable you are speaking is incredibly impressive. Um, and I just appreciate, I'm sure we all do, and love seeing this incorporated into Williamsville. So, I see that all three schools were involved. Do you come back and share out with the rest of your schools?
So, I think, I'll come up to the mic. I think I can speak a little bit to that. So, um, our school, we had, so, students who attended the first year that Williamsville participated were then automatically, uh, not automatically, we had to be trained, but we were given positions as change agents for when Williamsville hosted the summit. But what we have done now, at least in East, and I can speak only for East, but we have begun to involve the rest of the student body in some of these movements and in some of these, uh, I don't wanna call them policies, but we'll, we'll call them, uh, 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 moments, I guess, where we, we host events and we, um, try and be involved in our Taste of East, which is, uh, an event during our homecoming. Um, we try and get involved in Unigame Diversity, which is a huge club at East. And, and we really try and use the clubs that already exist at East, because there are a lot of them, and, and, and kinda push into them and, and, and bridge, like I said, the divides between some of these clubs. Because a lot of these clubs are parroting the same messages, they're just only reaching one segment of the population of East. So, if we can get their message out to a broader, oh, lordy, out to a broader section of our school population, we've essentially done our job. So, that's, that's the goal, is to take these messages, take what we've learned at the summit, and then bring it back to our home schools through events and through, uh, uh, pushing into clubs and things like, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to issue, um, at South, this has been a, become a very big program. Um, starting this month is the first time, uh, we're starting the Challenge to Change Club. It's meeting every third Wednesday. So, we, we wanna go above and beyond and, you know, try to expand and get the whole school involved. And we wanna try to expand on this next year and, um, try to make more people show up next year, 'cause, you know, I thought it was a very phenomenal success.
So, at North, we're trying to integrate the things that we learned from Challenge to Change into our school. And we have a cultural awareness club that, uh, formed last year. And it was very successful with our Taste of North, and we're gonna do it again this year. And we're gonna bridge the whole, what we learned from Challenge to Change to cultural awareness and try to get more people involved in it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Marchloff, would you, uh, bring us into the 2018-2019 District Goals Progress Report, please?
Thank you, Ms. Womay. Uh, your District Goals Progress Report has been provided, uh, to the board in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions or have any discussion about any of the items at this time.
Mr. Mecca?
I think I do, but I have to, um, look at my notes. Sorry.
Brief pause then. Anyone else have any comments or questions while we wait? Mrs. Bieger?
I'll mention, um, one of the goals that I was happy to see, um, progress, as we know, in the last couple of years, um, that there's been surveys that have gone out. There's been surveys that we've seen, um, just the community in general, uh, asking opinions on what are matters of importance. Um, so, it seems like there's, uh, some work being done there. And also, um, surveys regarding, uh, languages other than English. And I saw, just in my high school son's, uh, course book, that there's a offering for, um, Mandarin, for, uh, foreign language. So, I thought, what a wonderful way to see this go full circle, um, that this was brought up at community forums and people coming to talk to us here. Um, one of the district goals is to initiate, um, these surveys to find this information. And then here it is in, in our course offerings for our high school students. So, I was really pleased to see that progress. Um, and I was curious about, um, it, it's in process right now as far as the surveys that, um, are, were sent out to the community. So, I was curious if we have an update as to next steps, um, what the district plans to do with some of that information going forward.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mrs. Bieger. Um, tomorrow, we are sending out a link to a new survey slash exchange to have a discussion about a certain item that originated from last year's survey exchange. And that was, one of the themes we heard from our parents and community members is the importance of educating the whole child. And so, now, one question we have for parents and community members essentially is, what do you mean by that? What does it mean to educate the whole child? Does it mean we need more character education programs? Does it mean, uh, we need more emphasis on health education? Uh, does it mean, uh, we wanna spend more time around leadership, community service? What are some of the things that, uh, folks think and can provide us feedback on, on why they're important when it comes to educating the whole child? And I'll look forward to sharing that at a future board meeting, uh, later in the, in the spring.
Great. Thank you for that.
Mr. Mecca?
Thank you for the, um, update on the goals and thank you for the time to log back in. I lost my authentication with the server or something. It was a very thorough presentation of the, uh, of the progress toward the goals that were set earlier. Um, it, it was impressive reading it over, uh, the, the document, even though it took a little bit to get through it all. It was quite impressive to see, um, especially as we talk in the context of our next retreat possibly being about goal setting. You know, uh, the administration is doing a fantastic job with goal setting and then executing on those goals. Um, I was glad to see that, uh, we worked with the unions to come up with new HR protocol for hiring and that we'll be piloting the new process with respect to administrative hiring for the, uh, Maple West principal position. And I'll be interested, once that process is completed, to hear the feedback on how it went. Um, and, uh, I'm happy to see that progress has been made on all issues related to school safety. And I'm pleased that we're still vigilant on this issue and maintaining the focus on this very important issue. So, those are just my comments. And then question wise, I guess, um, I, I saw the, uh, opportunity that's available through the relationships that we're creating with, uh, partners like Damon. And, uh, there was, uh, something in there about students being able to take advantage of free summer courses at Damon. And I was just wondering, what do students have to do to avail themselves of an opportunity like that?
Well, um, that is a new partnership we have just established. It will provide, um, certified teachers who are in Damon programs for two of our high, uh, two of our elementary schools as a pilot, uh, to provide assistance to our students who are most in need. At the same time, Damon is going to provide our high school age students with an opportunity to take summer, uh, courses at Damon, just like if they were a Damon College student. Um, they have a listing of courses, uh, that they are offering, uh, for our students. And Dr. Baylen and I have a meeting with officials from Damon, actually, on Friday, uh, to discuss next steps. And one of the next steps we would see is for officials from Damon to come in and speak with our high school, uh, school counselors to make sure, um, that those opportunities are shared with students and with families. Um, to be able to take, uh, an actual college course tuition-free while you're in high school is, can be of great benefit, uh, to provide a college transcript for a student. And, um, and it's free of charge, which is a huge plus for our families. So, we really look forward to that. We will be putting that, um, some documentation together on it, uh, to share with our families as well. So, hopefully, it'll be something that is well-received and, and something that our students will look to engage in, starting this summer.
Gotcha. Okay, so it's kind of still in the planning stages, it sounds like. And my question's a little bit poorly timed, because it hasn't all been worked out at this point as to how it's gonna be rolled out. That'd be basically a fair summary of that?
That's a fair summary, yes.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Bieger?
I'm sorry to make one more comment, but the, just one other thing that really stood out to me in these district goals. We talk quite a bit about the importance of social, emotional, mental, physical health, um, student wellness. The district goals, um, what struck me is there's so many really rich goal activities around this, around suicide prevention, social, emotional wellness programs, not just for kids, but, um, informational opportunities for, um, parents. And I recall a couple of years ago, Dr. Seary bringing up some restorative practices and, and those kinds of ideas. And I was really thrilled to see that the idea of circles in classrooms is going to be piloted. And all that really is, is just community building, um, within the classroom. And it's a proactive activity rather than a reactive. So, um, where somebody may not feel included or part of, of, um, the student community, um, starting your day or however, it, you know, it's chosen to be implemented, because you can do it different ways. Um, the fact that our, our district is looking to take the time and try to pilot something like this to help our students feel included, um, rather than wait till somebody doesn't feel included and, and, and the issues that can come from that, I think that's wonderful. And I was really happy to see, um, that item listed under the progress for one of those goals. So, thank you to our district leadership and everyone involved in, in that work. I think that's excellent.
Mr. Mecca?
Um, can I make a request, I guess, based on that? I, I like the idea, but I've never really seen it in action. And I don't know if we're filled up with presentations already. I kinda think we had planned some of that out already. But I wouldn't mind seeing a presentation in the future on that, maybe along with some video footage, if it's possible, to see how it works. Yeah.
I'd have to be careful about video footage for student confidentiality reasons, but it is something we can certainly provide the board a presentation on, if you're okay with it. I would recommend we wait until next school year for that presentation, because it'll give us a chance to continue our training and implementation and begin to really, uh, work in this area. So, that'll give us time to reflect on where we are with it.
Absolutely, yeah, no, no, uh, immediate need, but I think it'd be interesting to see how it works.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Marchloff.
You're welcome.
Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to adopt the district's annual Medicaid compliance program as presented? Mr. Mecca, is there a second? Mrs. Bieger, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to authorize the Williamsville Central School District to issue bonds to finance the 2018 music space improvement capital project as presented? Mrs. Van Sis, second? Mr. Bornstein, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, Dr. Marchloff, the 2019-2020 Budget Development Program?
Thank you again, Ms. Womay. Uh, this evening, we're gonna share a number of items with the board that are under consideration when it comes to the development of the 2019-20, uh, school budget. Um, please understand that some of these may seem a bit vague or a bit general at this time, because we're still fine-tuning what it would really look like, number one. Number two, is it something that should remain on the list for our future consideration? And number three, is this something that's going to, uh, make it to the finish line, if you will, through the 2019-20 budget development process? All those items are, are absolutely, uh, up for discussion between now and April when the board adopts the budget for 2019-20. Um, we'll continue to have conversations about each of these items. We'll consider keeping them or removing them. And we also, there may be opportunities for adding new items to, uh, the list of things that we should consider for the future, particularly based on feedback from our principals, uh, from our administrators, from our teachers, parents, anyone, uh, that comes forward and might have, uh, good ideas that we should consider as a school district. So, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Maturski, and he's gonna share a little bit of information about where we are when it comes to the planning process for next year's budget.
Thank you, Dr. Marchloff. Uh, the information is, um, being presented tonight, um, is in a format similar to the past. Um, it shows the, um, the breakdown of our, um, project, or projected expenditures, um, for continuing our current program on this particular page. And then we'll look at some of the areas we're looking to supplement and support our programs. Um, the report is based on, uh, two different sections, as you can see. Uh, one dealing, uh, strictly with, uh, the upcoming budget of 2019-20. And then, uh, look forward, just so that we have an understanding on what some of the continuing expenses do to, um, the following year's budget. So, on this page again, you're seeing really the, the core items that we would, um, would look to see in every budget year. Um, just as Dr. Marchloff said, these are early estimates. The, the amounts will be reviewed and fine-tuned in the coming months. Um, presently, you can see the largest item on this report would be our employee salary increases, estimated at about three point seven million dollars, and those are contractual. Um, the indicators here are for either contractual inflation, program support, or in some situations, they could be mandated. Um, the next three, speaking of mandated, are just that, um, social security, health insurance, and BOSI's to a point, because some of these programs are there for support. And some of them are based and some of them are based upon student enrollment also. So that's an early indication on what we're looking at in these categories. Social Security is based again on what our salary levels are. We're looking at about a $225,000 increase in that category. Health Insurance, about $400,000, and BOSI's right now at $270,000. Contract and supply increases is expected to go up about $450,000 right now. That's really due to, I think, the inflation we've all, all have experienced outside of the school district in our personal lives. And so that would bring us to a total of $5,045,000 as an increase. Would provide about a 2.64% increase to the current budget of where we're at. So I'm going to now just transition to the next page, which is the support. And here you're gonna see that we have a lot of items listed and a lot of to be determined. That's where we're continuing to fine tune all of those pieces of, of what we might go. And, and as Dr. Martzloff said, some of these will likely be added and fine tuned to new items as we go through the process. On the instruction end, there are a number of items here. I'm just gonna review the items and then we can have further discussion following this and into the future. Continued implementation of the units of study program. Enhancement of the math curriculum. Language other than English enhancing that. Team leader positions, 4,000 per appointed position. And the addition of reading support person at the elementary school level, .5 FTE. Moving into exceptional education and student services. Looking at the addition of counselors to address identified needs. Addition of social workers to address identified needs. And then in the instructional technology area, there's two positions being reviewed here. One being a microcomputer support technician position to assist our current staff with the ongoing items needed on the hardware and software side on a daily basis. And then a trainer position that would help in maintaining the development and definitions that we have and that are ever increasing within the technology area of our district. So both of those positions are added. And in addition to that, the list goes to administration. This is a continuation of the program we implemented last year, which would be to add high school faculty managers at each high school and to add assistant principals at our elementary school. So this would be phase two, year two of that program. Administration wise, add some additional administrative support at the middle school level. And then district wide, we're looking to increase our professional development area and allow for district personnel to attend conferences that will allow us to further improve our instructional programs and implement new practices that will help support them throughout the district. And then district wide, we're looking to add some additional equipment funds that would be helpful to all of our departments. And this also can be helpful in the upcoming music project. So with that, these items, again, a lot of to be determined in it, but with what we know at this point in time, that would be a $1,043,000 increase. And again, looking at it just with these, it would be .55%. But the grand total here at, again, right now, at this very early phase, would be a $6,088,000 increase. It would provide a, a working budget of $196,903,689 or represent a 3.19% increase. So again, that's what we're looking at. On the other side, you're only seeing the salary increases at this point in time. But that would be the future outlook for the following year, just to know how those things do continue to build our budget.
Thank you. Questions from board members? Mr. Mecca.
So, so looking at it preliminarily, the increase would be above, most likely, what we would be able to raise with respect to the tax cap. Would, would I be correct in saying that?
The tax cap, we, we don't have the final numbers at this point. So I think in the next meeting, especially when we get the state aid numbers, we can better answer that question.
Okay.
Mrs. Leatherborough.
Help me to remember. Do, do you anticipate we will have more information on state aid by next month?
Normally, the governor's budget proposal comes out toward the end of January. So we have that analysis completed and yes, we should be able to share that information.
Thank you. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
This is regarding the money for units of study. Somebody, Dr. Baylen, can help with this. Can you tell me how many schools are currently implementing? I don't just mean have been trained, but are, are actually on board and implementing it.
Thank you. At this point, across the elementary schools, all schools are implementing. Three are fully implemented, which are Forest, Dodge, and Heim Elementary. And there are staff members at varying grade levels across the other three schools that are also implementing. Approximately 80% of our elementary teachers are actively implementing the units of study. And we currently have teams at one of our middle schools implementing as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A follow up for that, then, the money that's sort of needed to continue its training, is that to get new individuals trained? Or are we at a point where we can do some in-house training of trainers? Like, where are we with that?
Actually, it's both for training as well as the resources needed with students. So there are varying packaged kits, if you will, that include readers and other materials, some teacher resources that are needed for implementation to take place. Fortunately, we have been offering a variety of trainings, both from, directly from Teachers College, as well as now we have our own literacy coach who started with us recently, just in late November. So we do have the capacity to do a fair share of the training in-house as well. But a lot of the more significant costs are really related to the program materials, which are directly used for teachers and students.
So some of that money, then, I'm hearing you say is being used for materials, not just training?
Yes.
Is there any way that, Mr. Matusky, that since it's materials, that it can be offset from a different budget line we currently have?
We always will, you know, in this process, start to look to reallocate. So that's one of the steps that we will be reviewing in the next month and a half or so.
I'd also like to add, we are in partnerships with Teachers College with the three schools who are fully implemented in order to continue those partnerships. We do have to fund that. We have been able to use grant monies along the way, but we do not know, given the uncertainty around grant funding, whether that's gonna be sustainable in the future and what we'd actually like to do expand, to expand the partnerships as well as continue our current ones. And there's a, a significant cost associated with that as well, in order to be able to do that.
Is that in addition to the $100,000?
That's, that's incorporated as part of it. We've been fortunate to work closely with the principals for many of the resources that have been secured. So we do try to plan in advance. It really is a combination of that $100,000. That's actually a pretty conservative figure when you look at all of what I just mentioned. Unfortunately, we've been able to already outfit a number of our classrooms and already have funded the professional development to a large degree. This is really to continue our journey. And we're confident, as you mentioned, through some other funding streams, that we'll be able to, for example, use textbook monies or things along those lines to work with principals to continue in the implementation process. But given the uncertainty, particularly around our Title II funds, which have sort of shouldered the burden of a larger amount of the training costs, I've tried to build some of that cost in here as well.
So in your opinion, Dr. Baylen, that $100,000, that's really to help with the program continuation?
Yes.
That's not an extra, really?
I'm sorry.
Not really considered an, an extra or an add-on? It's, it's to continue what we're already doing?
Both. It would be a continuation and it would also be in terms of expanding implementation as well.
And is the goal to get it to all of the schools and have it be like fully implemented as our literacy program for Ellen?
We have, to this point, not mandated its use. It has, as you know, taken off at rapid pace on its own, which I think has been really the beauty and the commitment that we've made. And I, you know, really have to thank the teachers for that because it really started with a group of teachers who went to Teachers College for one of the Saturday reunions and came back so energized. And really, that was the momentum that built from there. So where we are now is really a tribute to our staff. So we have not mandated or, you know, said that it has to be something that teachers use. They've decided on their own, but there's been such great interest and there continues to be great interest. In fact, when we were looking at the literacy coaching position, 92 people responded that they wanted support in implementing. And some of those were people who had not committed to implementation yet. So I think it has really grown and expanded on its own. And I think within a building, they've done really fine work on sharing with each other because what they're also trying to avoid is any gaps from one year to another. So it's been a natural growth. But what I would regret really and truly is if someone wants to implement that we don't have the capacity to be able to support them in the implementation. So as I said, we've really made a commitment in partnership with the principals. And I wish to thank Dr. Martzloff and the board and Mr. Matusky for really all of us working together to find any way, and especially from a financial standpoint, because it's a very, very significant commitment of resources to be able to support these individuals in implementing. So we've, we've made it happen so far and it's really through all of those efforts. But I feel at this time, we really just need this additional funding to be able to continue on our journey moving forward. And we're really, I'm feeling at this point, it's really just the remaining, you know, few pockets where we may, and, and I know have some interest in people implementing next year. Some have already started. They're just not fully committed to the whole program at this point. And I just, I, I think we need this money to continue our journey moving forward. So it's sustaining and growing.
Thank you.
Mr. Bornstein.
I was fortunate enough to spend an hour with Mr. Matusky in my continual education as a new board member. And my question to you is, at, at what point does any savings in current activities come into focus? To report back to maybe free up some more dollars for some of these activities?
What you saw on this last page is a reduction column with no dollars in it. That's really where, where we start to show those dollars is when we go back in the next month, month and a half, and two months and we review the current budget and all of the items that we are looking to add. We will come back with reductions that we can see and reallocations.
Very good. Thank you. And thank you for your time, again.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Van Seis.
Dr. Martzloff, I see the add administrative support at the middle school level with two full, two FTEs. Is that just due to maybe two middle schools increasing with student population? Or do they currently not have?
That was a request from two of our middle school principals.
Okay.
One being Transit Middle School and the other one, Mill Middle School. I think part of their thinking on it is they have more students than the other two middle schools. So they need a little more administrative support. Certainly, there are other rationales that could be developed and, and shared, but that was something that they thought would be important for their schools.
Okay. So that's what I was wondering, knowing that we have more middle schools, but these two schools have the rationale and feel like they're in need at this time due to population and needs. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments? Great. Thank you. Look forward to some of those other columns filling in next month. If you have any liaison or conference reports, please make sure you get them to Mrs. Carey through Wits. Please let board members know here, if you're on a table unable to attend any meetings, so that other board members here can attend and fill in for you, please. Does anyone need any coverage that they're aware of at this point? Nope? Okay. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? Okay, the English as a New Language, ENL presentation. Dr. Martzloff, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Lemaie. Certainly, there's been a great deal of interest from members of the board, as well as folks in our community to learn more about our program to service students who have English as a second language. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Baylen. And she will begin our presentation on this particular topic. You should all have a hard copy, as well as a copy in Word of the PowerPoint. So, Dr. Baylen.
Thank you, Dr. Martzloff. And, and thank you to the Board of Education, to our superintendent, Dr. Martzloff. I think what you'll see reflected here is really a commitment that our district, our school community has made in embracing our students and their families. I'm very, very proud of the work that has been done in this area for our English language learners. I wish to also acknowledge Ms. Greco and particularly our ESOL teachers. We have, I believe, an exceptional program and very dedicated individuals. And without further delay, we're gonna present some information to you. And if there are any questions or comments, we will be happy to address those. Thank you so much again for the opportunity. Ms. Greco?
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to share with you information on ENL, or English as a New Language. Again, my name is Karen Greco. I'm the Instructional Specialist for Social Studies, Languages Other Than English, English as a New Language, and Libraries for our District. I'm going to begin this evening. Maybe. Oops. All right. I'm sorry. Technical difficulty. Okay. I'm going to begin this evening with some common acronyms that will be woven into tonight's presentation. I'll start with ENL, as I mentioned. That refers to our program, English as a New Language. English, I'm sorry, Ls are English language learners and it refers to our students. ESOL refers to teachers, to our teachers, which teach English to speakers of other languages. The NICE slot is the Annual Assessment of the English Language given to Ls each spring. And it's referred to, again affectionately, as the NICE slot. NICE Tell is the statewide screener, which is used to identify and place Ls in our English language program. We can just display all of them. Okay. And looking at our ENL program in Williamsville, some interesting information to share with you. First off, we service almost 500 Ls, which includes 365 active Ls and 130 former Ls referred to as commanding level students. These students that are commanding are serviced for two years after meeting exit criteria. The most spoken language in our district outside of English is Arabic, with about 60 Arabic speakers. Thank you. This represents a changing dynamic within our district. 10 years ago, the most spoken language in our community was Chinese. At present, we have about 48 Chinese speakers. In New York State schools alone, there are 200 languages spoken by students. In Williamsville, over 42 different languages are represented by our students. The L population in Williamsville has grown 63% in the last five years. Now, please understand, there are multiple, multiple data points used to determine the number of Ls during the school year. For example, there's bed stay, Title III reporting, NICE slot testing, and the number of students serviced in a given school year. The six, this percentage change of 63% represents the total number of active Ls serviced during the school year. Last year, we serviced a total of 385 Ls, while only 365 of those were reported for the purpose of Title III. Again, it depends on the point of time in which you're measuring. Our L population is the fourth largest in the Western New York region. It represents close to 4% of the population within our district. I think this might be me. In looking at the L count in Western New York schools, the totals in this chart were provided to me by the Regional Bilingual Education Resource Network, known as ARBURN, and are based on Title III reporting as of May of 2018. The ARBURN is part of a statewide funded network of support for districts. The ARBURN provides technical support and professional development to districts. The ARBURN provides technical support and professional development to districts in New York State. As this chart clearly shows, the L population is not only growing in Williamsville, but across the region. Buffalo has the third largest population in New York State. In the town of Amherst alone, there were 750 Ls as of May 2018. This represents an increase of 25% from the previous school year. Enrollment numbers represent the number of Ls that have taken the NICE slot each year, which is again given in the spring. As you may recall, I started out sharing with you that the NICE slot is the annual assessment of English acquisition for our Ls. Students enrolled in our schools during the New York State testing window are required to be tested. Presently, as I stated, Williamsville has 365 Ls that are slated to take the NICE slot. Based on historical trends, L enrollment will increase by the spring. In 2017-18 alone, we tested 347 students. Of those 347, eighty-one tested commanding. Presently, again, we have 365 Ls, not including any commanding level students that we are required to service. Based on this, our L enrollment is already up 37% since the end of last school year. In addition to the 365 Ls, we service 130 commanding students for two years after exiting L status. So where do our Ls come from? A majority of our Ls are born in the United States. We see an influx of students from neighboring school districts, from school districts within New York State, and across the country. Based in part by available data and anecdotal information, we see the most represented countries in our district on this slide. Using information completed on registration documents, specifically the Home Language questionnaire, the most spoken languages of Ls in our schools are Arabic, Chinese, Spanish, Tamil, Telugu, Russian, and Hindi. In New York State districts outside of New York City, the most spoken language is Arabic, I'm sorry, is Spanish, followed by Arabic. Similar to special education, ENL is highly regulated. Commissioners Regulations Part 154 set the standard for education of Ls in New York State. These regulations were revised in 2014 and implemented in school districts across the state in 2015-16. The revisions touched every aspect of our ENL program, from identification and placement to exit criteria, to communicating required parent information, instructional programs, graduation requirements, certification and professional development, documentation and reporting. Many changes have been implemented in our ENL program in Williamsville so that we are in compliance with these regulations. For example, as a direct result of Part 154 in the minimum instructional requirements for our Ls, we moved from 12 full-time ESOL teachers to 23.0 full-time teachers in the 2015-16 school year alone, just to meet the minimum requirements. As enrollment has increased, we presently have 32 ESOL teachers servicing students in our district. The Blueprint for L Success is a statewide framework released in 2014, which is NICE Ed's vision for educating Ls. NICE Ed's mission is to ensure that all New York State students, including Ls, attain the highest level of academic achievement and success while increasing English language proficiency. NICE Ed, along with our district, believes that all teachers are teachers of Ls. The principles that are in this document provide guidance, resources, support to school districts, school buildings, teachers, leaders, and others, all in an effort to promote a better understanding and appreciation of English as a new language. The L identification process is a state mandated process. While we have some students that arrive in our district already having been identified as an L, we have the obligation to screen, identify, and place when necessary students within ten days of, within ten school days of enrollment. As we know, students arrive at different times throughout the year, and as such, screening and identification is a continuous process led by ESOL teachers occurring at each building during the school year and in a centralized location each summer. The process begins with the Home Language Questionnaire, the HLQ, that's administered to all new registrants. According to state regulations, qualified personnel must review each HLQ. In Williamsville, ESOL teachers review HLQs to determine required next steps. Any indication of a language other than English triggers the screening process, particularly in questions four, five, six, and seven with the big red circle and the arrow. If a student, a student's family indicates that any language other than English is understood, spoken, read, written, the screening process is triggered and the rest of the process continues. This document at registration is available in 41 different languages, and we are also required to provide interpretation and translation services to assist parents and guardians in completing the HLQ if needed. So once the screening process is triggered, the next step is an individual interview, and this is conducted by, with a student by an ESOL teacher. This takes place as soon as possible, keeping in mind, we do have only ten days, ten school days to determine L status. During this interview, ESOL teachers ask questions in conversation-like format while scripting students' responses to gauge the level of English acquisition, or to gauge actually the student's home language. The ESOL teacher reviews the, reviews available documents, prior assessments, and academic experience. An assessment of the student's abilities and work samples help determine the student's literacy and math levels in his or her home language. Based on parent or guardian's indicated preferred language, the interview is conducted by a translator or interpreter provided by the district. If the results confirm that the student's home or primary language is English, the student is not an L, and the screening process stops. If results indicate home or primary language is a language other than English, the screening process continues. The next step would be the administration of the NICETEL, which is the statewide screening tool for placement of Ls. The purpose of this test is to assess a student's English language level, and it is assessed, and this is assessed in four modalities, in speaking, listening, reading, and writing. The test is administered in each building as needed by an ESOL teacher, as well as during the summer screening process. Technically, the test is an untimed test. It can take anywhere from 25 minutes to an hour and a half, or sometimes longer, depending on the level and the ability of the child. ESOL teachers then score the speaking and writing. Students' bubble sheets are sent electronically to the Winnie Rick to complete scoring and are assigned an overall level of entering, emerging, transitioning, expanding, or commanding. A child's overall level on the NICETEL will determine if he or she is entitled to ENL services. To date, ESOL teachers have administered 123 NICETELs since July, with 76 given to incoming An overall level of entering, emerging, transitioning, or expanding places a student in the ENL program. Entering students are those with little to no English who rely heavily on teacher support and instructional scaffolds. This year, we have 7% of our L population are entering students. Students at emerging and transitioning levels rely on teacher support and instructional scaffolds to advance academic language and are on track to beyond grade level, but are not there yet. We have 13% of our students emerging and 24% as transitioning. Expanding students show great independence and advancing academic language skills and are, again, at the cusp of language acquisition according to state standards, and we have 55% of our L population as expanding. Charts on the next two slides outline instructional requirements for active and former Ls. All Ls K-12 are required to receive integrated ENL. In Williamsville, integrated ENL takes place in ELA. This is Core Content Area and English Language Development Instruction, which includes home language supports and appropriate L scaffolds. This instruction is delivered in a co-taught setting. In this instructional model, integrated ENL and ELA classes are co-taught by both classroom or content teachers and ESOL teachers. In addition to integrated ENL, ELA, entering and emerging Ls are required to receive standalone ENL. This is daily English language development instruction taught by an ESOL teacher in order to acquire English language needed for success in Core Content Areas. As I have mentioned, all commanding or former Ls are serviced for an additional two years after meeting exit criteria. Services are individualized to meet the linguistic needs of our students, and services range from integrated ENL, AIS, standalone ENL, GT services, to support in any of the four modalities of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. It truly is on an individualized basis. For entering levels, or entering students at the high school level, an additional unit of study for integrated ENL is required, and in Williamsville, the additional unit takes place in social studies. Similar to integrated ENL, ELA, the classes are co-taught by social studies and ESOL teachers. The instructional requirements outlined in these charts for K-12 are the minimum instructional requirements. These charts also articulate personnel that are considered qualified to deliver such Instructional and staffing requirements for students' English proficiency levels, in concert with buildings' master schedules, student schedules, and individual program needs of students ultimately determine staffing levels per building. In looking at our current L enrollment in Williamsville, 69% of Ls, both active and former, are serviced at the elementary level. Most of our ESOL teachers are assigned to this level. We have 19.4 of our 32 teachers at the elementary. Country Parkway services the most active and former Ls with 114, followed by Hymne Elementary with 66. And I didn't want to change my entire presentation, but it's actually 67. We got a new L today. Dodge has experienced a steady influx of Ls, moving from, moving from 33 in 2016-17 to its current total of 49. And the remainder of our elementary schools continue to experience a steady increase in L enrollment. 23% of Ls, both active and former, are serviced at the middle level. Casey and High Middle comprise a majority of middle-level L enrollment with 43 students. Individual needs of students, such as program requirements for Ls with an IEP, account for various staffing needs in all of our buildings, but particularly at the middle school. An L, for example, an L with an IEP is required to receive both special education and ENL services. This may result in an ESOL teacher servicing a student in a 15-to-1 ELA setting, and 48 of our 365 Ls also have an, also have an IEP, which represents 13% of our population. 7% of active and former Ls are serviced at the high school, keeping in mind the additional unit of study requirement for entering level Ls, along with the preparation for Regents exams and graduation requirements that take place at the high school level. The mission of our ENL program is to create a learning-rich environment for Ls through English acquisition and academic achievement. Our program is based on high standards, literacy development, strong ESOL teachers, a commitment by district and building leadership to equity, a positive school climate, parent and family involvement, assessment, and accountability. Just to give you a summary of our ENL program, ESOL teachers conduct required parent orientation to parents and guardians of Ls new to Williamsville. This orientation explains the L identification process, the ENL program, and the New York State standards. Williamsville has an ENL program in each of its 13 schools. Our Ls are serviced according to Part 154 as previously stated. Instruction takes place in English in both ENL and content classes with appropriate support and scaffolds. Duly identified students receive both special ed and ENL services, and stated previously, 48 of our Ls are duly identified. AIS is provided in accordance with district guidelines. We are fortunate to offer a six-week ENL Summer Academy to all students to support English language acquisition. This past summer, we had 160 students participate. Of the 160, 33 were incoming kindergarten students, 110 were elementary, and 17 were middle and high school. All teachers and staff in buildings have access to interpretation and translation services as needed for students to support their learning. L parents and families are encouraged to participate in school and district activities. Buildings host different events, such as multicultural celebrations, to increase students' awareness and celebrate the diversity within our community. In order for a student to exit L status, and they must score commanding on the NICE slot, which I mentioned earlier, is given each spring, and that's consistent, consistently applied for grades K through 12. When the Part 154 regulations were revised a few years back, alternate exit criteria was added in three through eight and nine through 12. A student in grades three through eight who scores expanding on the NICE slot, and also a three or above on the New York State ELA, can exit L status as long as they attest those scores are within the same school year. At the high school level, students scoring expanding on the NICE slot, along with a 65 or above on an English Regents exam in the same year, can exit L status as well. And again, once, once an L is exited, we do continue to service that child for two On average, we have exited four students per year through the alternate criteria, which I mentioned has been in place for the past few years. In looking at NICE slot data, ESOL teachers in Williamsville target instruction for our Ls as evidenced by many factors, including NICE slot data. The average L receives ENL services just under two years in Williamsville before exiting L status. As you can see, we have a 20% three-year average of students testing commanding. The most recent comparison I can make to available New York State data is from the 16-17 school year, where the average number of, or the average percentage of students in New York State testing commanding was 9.5%. During that same school year, a little over 22% of students in Williamsville tested commanding. We are fortunate to be part of a district with so many resources available to support students. A variety of professional development resources and workshop offerings are available to all teachers throughout the school year and at times in the summer to support teachers, leaders, and staff working with Ls. As highlighted earlier, buildings have teams of ESOL teachers to work collaboratively with each other and to support classroom and content teachers working with Ls. Our ESOL teachers serve as resources for administrators, teachers, and staff. Updated every two years, the cultural diversity Updated every two years, the Cultural Diversity and Resource booklet is a valuable resource for faculty and staff to help foster knowledge, understanding, and acceptance within our school community. Updated annually, the Religious and Cultural Observances Calendar assists faculty and staff in planning, as well as increases awareness and understanding of the various faith and cultural observances in our community. So where do we go from here? So, understanding that our L population has increased 63% over the past five years and continues to increase. It's imperative that the district resources continue to be allocated to support the ENL program. With New York State mandates on instruction, reporting, and teacher training, this is a necessary commitment of the district. This includes teachers, administrators, and instructional materials to continue to grow and strengthen our program. Opportunities exist and need to be further explored for connections with colleges and universities to continue training and professional development for current and pre-service teachers. An area of opportunity that we can strengthen with additional resources is family engagement of our Ls. Also, grant funding can be secured to support the ENL program. This requires resources to research, identify, and secure funding. Williamsville is a diverse school community. As evidenced by my presentation, we are becoming increasingly more diverse. We must maintain our focus on developing and advancing cultural understanding. This requires continued professional development and the implementation of school-based programs for all stakeholders. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you information on our ENL program.
Thank you. Questions from the board. Mr. Borenstein?
Thank you. That was a great presentation, and it's impressive program as well. You mentioned that there's opportunities to enrich relationships with colleges and universities. Do we currently have those relationships with the other colleges and universities here in the town of Amherst?
We absolutely do. We have programs which allow students, particularly pre-service teachers, to participate in our ESOL classrooms, in our ENL academy, but it's always an area that we are looking to strengthen.
Okay, so you engage with UB and Damon College and ECC, or the program does?
UB, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. It's a great program. Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Leatherboro?
I had a bunch. I submitted them earlier, and I will not ask them all, so no worries. I do hope, though, that they are reviewed and discussed internally. I did want to ask one question, though, regarding just the current structure, just looking at your role. You're in charge of so much. Has there been any talk of perhaps using a TOSA assignment in the future to assist with both the assessment? I do understand that the assessment can take a while, the screening assessment, and that sometimes the building ESOL teacher has to cancel instruction in order to give that assessment. Has there been any discussions of using a TOSA in the future to help with both assessment and also program support, communication between buildings and district, anything like that?
There have been some discussions in the past couple of school years regarding the possibility of a TOSA. Again, as you mentioned, that is something that perhaps would relieve some of the responsibilities of the ESOL teachers at the building level as far as screening, identification, and placement is concerned. I know in looking at some larger districts, particularly those in the area, there are some that do have centralized screening, identification, and placement, which allows ESOL teachers to focus solely on instruction and servicing Ls and serving as resources within the building. As I've shared, our program is experiencing rapid growth, and, you know, we are doing our best to explore all avenues that would further enhance our program and allow us as a district to allocate appropriate resources to ensure program continuity, compliance with New York State regulations, compliance with professional development requirements, again, increasing opportunities for parent engagement. But definitely, this is an area that would, that needs to be explored to further enhance our program as we see it continuing to grow.
Really, like exploding.
Exploding, yes.
I can't wrap my head around, like, what your day must be like when I see everything that you have there. Just one final question. I understand the co-teaching model comes down as a sort of a directive from New York State, but we know that co-teaching can look very different from room to room and from building to building. Part of why I asked so many questions about units of study is it's my understanding that that program lends itself nicely to small group breakouts, which then allows the co-teacher, whether it be a special education co-teacher or an ENL co-teacher, to take those small groups where the power is in the small groups. The power isn't standing along the wall as wallpaper. We know this, right? So, how, I guess, like, how are we ensuring that our ENL teachers, when they are in the ELA classroom, are really getting that one-on-one FaceTime with the students so that they have more opportunity for language output and not just walking around the rooms looking over their shoulders? What's in place to really make sure that they're being fully utilized?
Well, our co-teaching model, our models are not one that is mandated by the district. There's no one particular model. We prescribe to Honings Feld and Dove, which puts forth seven different models of co-teaching that, walking into a classroom, you could see those seven different models taking place in a 40-minute session or an hour session class. Teachers that are co-teaching generally are those that have expressed interest and express a commitment, a continued commitment to working collaboratively with the ESOL teacher or ESOL teachers that are assigned to them. It is a marriage, so to speak, that is fostered, a relationship that is fostered, that is continually, there's continual growth through professional development. There's a commitment by the educators involved, as well as the building leaders, to continue that relationship from year to year to the extent possible, understanding that there are factors that do affect that, those pairings. But continual teacher training, to specifically address your question, opportunities for collaboration, to the degree possible, opportunities to plan where possible, is really the best way that teachers are making the co-teaching model successful to ensure that learning is occurring for all students in the classroom. I mean, we know as educators that the strategies that our ESOL teachers are using, that our content and classroom teachers are using to support English language learners, support all students. So again, it's a continuous effort. This past year, we were fortunate to have a two-day training, well, it was two separate days, but for all teachers that are currently co-teaching with their ESOL teaching, with our ESOL partners. We had Doctors Honings Feld and Dove right here in this room for two solid days in ensuring that we continue to strengthen and grow our co-teaching model.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Van Seis?
My, I have two questions, and they really pertain to bridging the communication gap with all the different languages. I know you mentioned the Home Language questionnaire is available in 42 different languages. Do you have other documents? I know, I believe WITS has the capability to translate into various languages. Are there other documents that are almost even automatically generated that parents that speak a different language have access to, such as open house pamphlets, parent-teacher conferences, CSE meeting invites?
This is definitely one of the more challenging aspects of the ENL program, is providing information, whether it's required information or any type of information in languages that meet the needs of our parents and families. As part of the Part 154 regulations, we are required to record families' preferred language and mode of communication, so we do our best to meet the needs, or those needs, for required information. We are working on a plan to have a very distinct set of common district documents that are translated and available in the various languages for parents. Right now, we do have a core set of documents, depending on what we're looking at, that is available for our teachers to provide. Like, for example, our allergy letters are in a variety of different languages. There are efforts in the region. For example, the Arburn is working on a similar initiative to compile documents from districts across the region and translate them in various languages. New York State has done a phenomenal job in translating things like the Home Language questionnaire and providing parent orientation videos in a variety of languages. So there are different resources right now. If there is something that we don't have in a language that is needed, we do our best to ensure that that documentation, that information is translated. It's kind of on an as-needed basis right now.
And I know that's extremely challenging, especially with 42 different languages, but it's great to hear that we're growing and we're still looking at those options and continuously going to have to make more movements to reach all the different families. And just the second part of that, does Williamsville currently have an interpreter or an interpreting system or program that's readily available when parents come in for meetings?
Yes, we do. We actually maintain our own approved translator and interpretation list. We have a variety of approved individuals that have applied to the district, that have been fingerprinted, that have gone through the process to be cleared, to work in our schools. We also have access to on-demand types of translation services, and we have other community-based services that can provide such translation and interpretation.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other comments, questions? Mrs. Greco, thank you so much for this in-depth presentation tonight.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion or resolve to approve the tenured recommendations as presented? Mrs. Leatherboro, is there a second? Mrs. Beager, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Facilities improvement. Dr. Markslaw, again, please.
Yes, I just very briefly want to share that the district is in the final stages of submitting our preliminary plans to New York State for their approval so that we can get to work on our newly community-approved capital project. And that process usually takes six to nine months, so we're hoping to submit it to New York State very soon.
Thank you. Special needs and student activities, I don't see anything under there to discuss. Does anyone have a request or matter to discuss in their committee, the whole? Under correspondences, just pointing out that I think you all saw the attached letter there that was in your packets. It was the district board adopted drafted letter that we sent to the commissioner on December the 19th, reminding the commissioner that she had volunteered to come to Williamsville to conduct Q and A session with staff and whatnot regarding various issues. Dr. Markslaw, any chance we've heard anything back yet?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any other correspondences to share? Do want to say thank you to the community members that so nicely brought us some desserts this evening. We will now conduct a second public expression with the same rules as outlined in our first public expression. Anyone wishing to address the board should go to the podium, and please sign in at this time.
Hi, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Jan Fong. I have two sons in the school district. I also volunteer on the, to actually serve on the Buffalo Chinese School. So I would like to come to thank you personally for your hard work and service to the community. We learned very recently that the instruction of Chinese course has been added to the course catalog in all three high schools. And this has been a lot of work from you, from the board of, from the school board, from everyone in the district. I understand that it's a tremendous undertaking. We hope that it will be successful. We understand that at this stage, it's just being tested at the high school. There are a variety of issues, obviously, because this is new, and also people have been, well, the student have been studying French and, for example, Spanish for four years, and it might be hard for people to switch to another language. Be as may, I think that this is a very good start. I think that we can gauge the issue and theism of our school and our students. And hopefully, in the future, if the interest warrants, we may be able to expand to younger students so they can benefit from this tremendous resource. I think that the school district is offering a tremendous service to really enable our student to thrive well in this ever-changing world, and I really applaud all of you for working so hard to help to actually make this happen. It's from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please don't forget to sign in there, if you would, please. Anyone else? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss collective negotiations with transportation union, the CSEA Buildings and Grounds contract parameters, matters regarding law enforcement and public safety, employment matters relating to a particular person or persons, and matters of other current litigation? Mrs. Leatherboro, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Someone like to make a motion to return the board meeting to public session, please? Dr. Brenator, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Borenstein, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Our next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, February the 12th at 7:00 PM here in district offices. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? That would be Dr. McClary, is there a second? Mr. Meyer, I'm sure you, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Good night.